You know, we just heard of the resignation of Nuri Martinez. And I think about the incredibly painful and hurtful words that she said over the course of an hour, when she said it in almost a gleeful way, taking joy in saying these horrible things about different communities and showing disdain for your colleagues.
Anti-AFSCN Galley's. Doesn't that sound familiar? Who does that sound like? Well, you heard, the name was Nuri. But obviously, the behavior is essentially identical to Let Me See Your Handcuffs. And I thought I would draw upon this similarity, nearly identical situation that is going on, the scandal in Los Angeles. After some tapes were dropped on three city council members and the labor union president. It was horrendous, the things that they were saying. Now, remember, Let Me See Your Handcuffs likes to call herself a teacher. She has a teacher credential, public servant. But I want to make sure everybody's up to speed before I get into the main commentary. I want you to listen to this brief clip about what's happening in Los Angeles. That's going to set the stage for this video. Stay tuned, and I will return.
Well, we begin today's show looking at the growing political scandal in Los Angeles. On Monday, the president of the Los Angeles City Council, Nuri Martinez, resigned from her leadership post after she was caught on tape using racist language against indigenous people in the city and for describing the black son of a city council member as a little monkey. Martinez made the comments last year during a conversation discussing redistricting with Los Angeles City Council members Kevin DeLeón and Gil Sadio, as well as Ron Herrera, the head of the Los Angeles County Federation of Labor, who also resigned last night. It's unclear who recorded the call or who leaked it to the media, but it comes just weeks before voters head to the polls in Los Angeles to pick a new mayor. The scandal has put a spotlight on tension between Latinx and black political leaders in Los Angeles. In one part of the phone call, Nuri Martinez can be heard talking about the adopted son of fellow Democratic Council member Mike Bonin. Bonin's white, his son is black. She accused Bonin handling his son as if he were a, quote, "accessory like a purse", and she describes the boy as "changuito", which translates as "little monkey".
Okay, for those of you who are interested in hearing the actual audio, it is something I'm not posting on this page. It is disgusting. The link is below the title. And what I would also like you to do at the end of this video, listen to the feedback from several council members, LA City Council members, addressing what this all means. What is the spirit of this behavior that they heard from their colleague? What they say describes Let Me See Your Handcuffs down to the nitty gritty. The whole disposition about somebody who would engage in a behavior like this. So let me point out something that's very important to keep in mind. There are people who actually have power. There are people who act as if they do, and they have none. When it comes down to assuming the disposition of complacency, the disaster that results from that is pretty profound. It doesn't make any difference because people acting like they do have power and people who do have power and they have no concept of what it really means, it's only unto them, they don't give a damn about anybody else and who they impact. These are the kinds of things they end up in. And the same can be said for Let Me See Your Handcuffs with respect to what she has done up here in these YouTube streets. Acting as if she had power, she doesn't. Complacent and reckless. And what's been the result? Disaster. Oh, no, I'm not letting go of the disgraceful rogue public servant crisis that we have. People on working hours, working time, talking about their plans to further disenfranchise already malign groups. They did not miss literally any group. They were talking about people who were supporting our people. They were talking about children, someone's child was brought in. You have this person, this city council president who's resigned, talking about she's going to beat down a child. It's the same crap we see here in these YouTube streets coming from these public servants. And Let Me See Your Handcuffs leads the charge. Public servants, public officials. Now, I'm bringing up Let Me See Your Handcuffs because she's been trying very hard to get people to believe that she did nothing wrong. And I stated it several videos back, how much trouble Let Me See Your Handcuffs is in. Let Me See Your Handcuffs is up here whining and complaining about people clipping and people don't want to go live because of what they might say. If you have to worry publicly about what people will clip from you, that means you're doing a whole lot of dirt behind the scenes. Same with these people here, this former city council president who resigned. She resigned from the council altogether, initially was resisting. This is the same thing, what she would do in public. When community members would come up to give their comments, you have a certain amount of time. She would mute them. She was not interested in hearing what anybody had to say. She felt so secure in her position of power. She literally thought she could do what the hell she wanted to do. Same for the other three and this labor union leader. Now, one of the people here, Sadio, he has not resigned and DeLeón has not resigned. They're holding on. Now, here's the problem with Sadio, and you're going to hear it if you click on that link. He essentially didn't say anything when these conversations were going on. He said a few things, but how are you allowing this to go on? You're sitting in a meeting and these people are just talking. It's not a city council meeting, it's a meeting with the labor union president. And they're plotting how to, again, further disenfranchise malign groups. They didn't leave any group out of the equation. They're talking about indigenous groups from Mexico. They're talking about Asians. They're talking about blacks. They're talking about LGBTQ+. They're talking about white folks who, quote, "are with the blacks". These people are evil and conniving and felt so confident that nobody would know what they were doing. Same thing with Let Me See Your Handcuffs. But let me tell you something about Los Angeles. You are a fool if you think offices that you're in aren't bugged. Everybody knows that. What the hell's wrong with these people? Complacency. See, there's a thing in Los Angeles, it's a joke, but it's true. Take your trash home. I worked in LA for 13 years. The city of Los Angeles and surrounding cities, don't leave your trash in the office. It doesn't matter who you are. If somebody is looking for something, they will go digging in the trash to find it. Trust, you meet people, but these people very clearly got away from themselves. Obviously, somebody bugged the office. This took place in Ron Herrera's office. They knew these city council people were coming. And apparently, this recording was captured a year ago. I mean, the words that they were saying about people, not even sparing a child, a two-year-old child, talking about they're going to beat the child down. Hmm, does this sound familiar about how people are targeting children? Let Me See Your Handcuffs leads the charge. And here she is, just like Sadio and DeLeón, trying to escape responsibility. They're even more brazen. Nobody can remove them from office. They have to be voted out by recall. Do you think they are plotting a way to hang on to their seats? You can better believe it. They're going to bank on fellow Mexicans keeping them in office. Yeah, people are outraged, but they are willing to take their chances. Let's see how far they're going to draw this out because you cannot just simply remove a city council person. I don't think you can do that anywhere in the United States. They're a very powerful position. The mayor can't do it. It has to be the people. People are outraged, as they should be. Just like people are outraged at the bullshit that Let Me See Your Handcuffs was engaged in and continues to be engaged in. Now, let's make it very clear. I've said a lot of things about Let Me See Your Handcuffs. Every single thing I've stated is true. I want to make sure this is clear. The goal is not to get Let Me See Your Handcuffs to acknowledge anything. That's not what people do who are like Let Me See Your Handcuffs. This is not like what people do who are like these city council members. The only reason why this Nuri Martinez resigned, because she has no backbone. She is the worst coward. She is only comfortable if she's in total and complete control. If she has the perception that she's in total and complete control. There is no difference, just like Let Me See Your Handcuffs. She was all good, people. It was all good when she thought she had this power over AFW. Putting those live streams up, running these lies, labeling people child molesters, allowing people to talk about people's spouses and sexual relationships they don't know. She was having a jolly good time. And the thing that kills me, exactly what the city council members were saying about these people. They are laughing, they are gleeful in their attacks upon colleagues, upon the community. They thought it was funny and they enjoyed it. And these are people in the most powerful positions in the city. With Let Me See Your Handcuffs, her perception was she was in a powerful position. The actions are no different. And it came crashing down like a ton of bricks. Let me talk about a beatdown. These vile reprehensible demons were talking about beating down a two-year-old black child who is the adopted son of one of the council members who is gay and is married to a man. Calling him a little bitch, saying they're going to beat the child down, calling the child a little monkey. I mean, people, come on. But there is no difference between Let Me See Your Handcuffs behavior, running, surviving AAS, and putting all these people up here who had threatened to sexually torture me, threatened to rape me. She had Dumble Ding Dong up there. She had Gory Hell, who's trying to find goons to spread lies on people who were clearly threatened in this space. And I got a video dropping on Gory Hell Murray. Yeah, we see your smart ass posts that have been sent to us over the past four and five months. We know what the hell you've been saying. We've got something for your ass. Listen, just hold on for that. Let Me See Your Handcuffs running this butthole pick Bernice up there. All this bullshit that Let Me See Your Handcuffs was running and was loving every minute of it, to the point she thought she was going to seize. Remember, we got this imaginary power. Let Me See Your Handcuffs is dealing with, just like these people, with actual power. The conduct is no different. Let Me See Your Handcuffs thought she was the shit, that she was going to steal anti-fraud warriors, AFW, the LLC. She thought she was that bad. She thought she was that bad that she can threaten me and Gerald with KKC and Lennon Honor as if she held some sort of power? What the hell does she think she was going to do with that? She thought she was going to get me beat down by all these dudes in these YouTube streets. Do you see the perception of power, a beatdown? She wanted me beat down by these dudes. Let Me See Your Handcuffs was doing this shit, thinking she was almighty and all-powerful until we decided to fight back. The people in Los Angeles are also fighting back. They didn't do a damn thing but go to the polls and vote for these people and listen to how they're treated. Look at how they're treated. Let Me See Your Handcuffs, she perked into AFW, lied. In her mind, she really perceived herself to be so powerful that she can come in and snatch the initials that everybody was talking about. It doesn't matter what you think about AFW. She knew in her head, she don't have anything that she can create on her own that would garner her any attention that's respectable. So she wanted to seize AFW titles. She said she was the president. She did all this shit because she thought she was powerful. Then running around with the Against the Law team, the A-team, who also was involved in a bunch of illegal activities. And Let Me See Your Handcuffs is front and center. What Let Me See Your Handcuffs doesn't want you all to know, I have stated this before in a previous video. Let Me See Your Handcuffs is the recipient of emails that she received from Demon Moore with people's breached information. She actually believes this is something she won't be held accountable for. She actually believes that running around on these demon-infused panels denying shit is going to keep her safe. She was interviewed by the Sheriff's Department because of what she was doing to break in the culture of silence. So much stuff is going on, people. I assure you of this, you are going to see, actually, the documentation of what I'm talking about. I'm not going to tell you at this point in time when that's going to happen. It will be soon. People have found all types of previous live streams. They have screenshots, they have quotes, they have tons of information beyond what they had before about the bullshit that Let Me See Your Handcuffs has been doing in these YouTube streets. And she really thinks she's going to get away with it. You're not getting away with any of this. She is a liar. She has been sued by breaking the culture of silence. She just hasn't been served. She knows what she did was wrong. She targeted children, she targeted families, and she's accepting information from Demon Moore that was illegally obtained. You cannot send anything by email or receive something by email and say you didn't get it. You can't say, you can say it, but you'd be lying through your teeth. If somebody sends you information that you knew good and damn well should not have been obtained, it's your job to tell the person to stop sending you this stuff. It's your job to report the person to keep yourself out of trouble, not Let Me See Your Handcuffs. She not only took the stolen information, she's redistributing the information to other people. We've known this. So you can rest assured, what I am saying to you all is not designed to convince any demons. Anyone that would engage in the activities that Let Me See Your Handcuffs does. I'm speaking to those who visit this space because they want to hear the truth. Mark the denials of Let Me See Your Handcuffs. All the denials that she's trying to put forth are futile because just the opposite has been captured in her own words, in her own videos, in other people's videos, in chats, all that stuff. She scrubbed her page. Why scrub your page if you didn't do anything wrong? Thankfully, people captured the videos from her page and the videos on other people's pages where she was engaging in this bullshit. They are fully aware of what she's been doing. But keep in mind, it isn't just one case that the authorities are working on. They have to work on a lot of different cases. And they have to be able to construct the proof. So it will be a very good chance that the people involved are going to be held duly accountable. People can come up here and deny all that. Just keep track of the denials, people. Keep track of the denials that Let Me See Your Handcuffs and others are trying to put forth as if other people have done something that is against the law. You can hate people all day, every day. If they're not breaking the law, there's nothing coming of that. Let Me See Your Handcuffs has broken the law. And she thinks she's going to shut me up with some fake and ass cease and desist letter. Where is the lawsuit? Where is the lawsuit? You said you're going to file against me because I have the CPS reports from the CPS agency. Every agency is named a little bit different. I'll just say CPS because we know CPS. I have the unredacted report. Let Me See Your Handcuffs, you are the identified caller to the agency that told those lies on breaking the culture of silence. You did it. You called the cops on her and you lied. You did it. So you can keep denying that you did this. It's not going to work. She's just saying it to try to appease people that she's this nice and sweet and innocent person, and she is not. Why did King Jive's kick you out of his chat? She wants to talk about me being kicked. I wasn't kicked out of any place. I've never been kicked out of any place in my life. You've been kicked out of so many places. You were kicked out of King Jive's chat. You were his moderator. You didn't think I knew that, right? I know, I saw the screenshots. Let Me See Your Handcuffs was so furious at King Jive's and a woman who he's loyal to that Let Me See Your Handcuffs is jealous of. Let Me See Your Handcuffs was so furious with King Jive's because he kicked her to the curb that she harassed his mother in prison. That's how furious she was. Calling his mother in prison, sending her money, trying to build a relationship with her because she was so angry at King Jive's. And we all know what happened with Let Me See Your Handcuffs and Demon Moore in the Against the Law team and Roxanne, Chicken Shit Roxanne. Let Me See Your Handcuffs, live on air, stabbed them in the back. Didn't have the guts to confront people who are right there on the livestream with an issue. She is a coward right there. She can't face you. She got off the phone and forgot to mute and went and called and started trashing Marcellus and the whole crew, supposedly her friends. What kind of sense does that make? Your friend is right there, supposed friend, right there, available to talk to you. You don't have any verbal skills or communication skills that you can navigate out of a situation? No. She is a backstabber. Someone had caught her sneaky. She's not sneaky. She is a backstabber. And it was demonstrated on live air. Let Me See Your Handcuffs was the main flunky. And once the law got involved, it was no longer to their advantage to keep her around. And she felt she was being pushed out and was angry about that and decided to unleash, although she didn't mean for everybody to hear it, she was already talking shit about them because she talked shit about them to me. She was so pissed at these people. She's trying to find ways to get back by mentioning Demon Moore's mental health issues. Oh, he doesn't have this diagnosis, he has that diagnosis. What friend would get on, this is before they tore her ass up online, what friend would get on YouTube disclosing information like that? It doesn't matter if your friend has spoken about their mental health issues. She wants to make sure people are reminded of it because she's pissed and she doesn't know how else to deal with it other than to get these digs in. It's called backstabbing. It is not sneaky. Sneaky people are successful at what they do. They don't get busted up and exposed to the whole entire world. Kicked to the curb, I don't know how many times, and still tries to come crawling back, begging to be a flunky. It's just bizarre how she tries to make it appear that she has something on people when she kept bringing up Lennon Honor and KKC. What did I ever tell her about either one of these people? Nothing that is sensitive or personal, nothing. What can she say? She wanted to make it appear as if I had disclosed information. I'm not the one that disclosed anything. It was KKC who got on the panel saying he gave me some information. Can you go into details about what it was? But I'm doing, what the hell is this? Just be thankful you didn't give it to Let Me See Your Handcuffs because she would have sold this shit. Lennon never gave her any information either. She was constantly on the prowl to get inside information that she never got. This person cannot be trusted. She doesn't have a wrench in either one of their chats. And I know she's pissed because she doesn't have any leverage, she can do anything to them. Now, she couldn't do anything to me either. In order to do anything to somebody, she has to break the law. That's where she got caught up. She is the one facing criminal charges, not me. She didn't have anything on me to do anything with. She targeted breaking the culture of silence because they were in the same space and there was some more information swimming around and called CPS illegally and the police illegally. She has to break the law in order to think she can get up on someone. She's been kicked out of social justice boards because of her attacks on breaking the culture of silence, her race attacking. And she's up here trying to convince people that she did nothing wrong. That's okay. Again, believe Let Me See Your Handcuffs, but you can never say a warning was non-existent. She was going to get me. You can't get me if I haven't done anything. Taking a stand is taking a stand, which she doesn't have the guts to do. What Let Me See Your Handcuffs does, she goes after innocent people and she stabs them in the back. She tries to separate families who don't need to be separated with lies. She ran around trying to get KKC and Lennon Honor riled up to attack me. Where did that lead you? Where did that get you? That didn't get you anywhere because I get to defend myself. I have to tell you that Let Me See Your Handcuffs is a pretty bad case of desperation, clouding any sense of reasonable judgment. It's so horrendously flawed that she actually thinks she is going to get away with the things that she has done. And I reissue the warning. Don't trust this person with anything, any personal information. There are some people who never learn, not even the hard way. The best thing you can do is steer clear of this conniving, backstabbing demon. That's exactly what Let Me See Your Handcuffs is. You're not going to convince me that her morality has any level of decency. When you make false reports, it doesn't matter. It could be the worst enemy on the planet that you can't stand with every fiber of your being. You're going to call the police and make a false report? Something that never even happened? We're not talking about embellishing. We're talking about completely and totally made up that a mother has broken her child's arm and is on drugs and doing all this. You have a serious price to pay with what you did. You had damn well better believe there will be a reckoning. People, just hang on because that information will be coming forth. Let Me See Your Handcuffs wants to try to decide when people will drop receipts. You don't call any shots. Those receipts are forthcoming. Just stay tuned. It will be announced. In the meantime, do not touch the dial because there's more to come after you hear, buyer beware.
In another part of the call, Nuri Martinez is heard talking about Los Angeles District Attorney George Gascon saying, quote, "F that guy, he's with the blacks."
Nuri Martinez's resignation is what we hope is the beginning of the end. The end of a nightmare that she, along with Kevin DeLeón and Gil Sadio, created for our city. Their racist, derogatory, and insensitive comments deep cut into the soul of the city of Los Angeles. No healing can begin until each of the individuals who have grossly misplanned or trust are gone. Everything we say and do has consequences, whether in public or behind closed doors.
For the last 72 or so hours, the city has been reeling, shocked and stunned by the revelation of outrageous, divisive, destructive, cruel, racist comments by some of the most powerful people in our city. None of us is entitled to this position. We are honored to serve in this position. And it's our obligation to exercise the very highest standard of personal conduct and to be beyond reproach. You know, we just just heard of the resignation of Nuri Martinez. And I think about the incredibly painful and hurtful words that she said over the course of an hour when she said it in almost a gleeful way, taking joy in saying these horrible things about different communities and showing disdain for your colleagues. For her, I hope she gets the help that she needs. The revelations of this tape...
The revelations of this tape showed a very hateful heart and a disdain for others in a sick way.
I have to say, I'm still in shock. It's really hard to decide what the next steps are in the healing process. But I was shocked that three of my colleagues, who are not only powerful but well-respected, turn out not to deserve that respect. I was shocked when I heard this late on Sunday. I heard some of the things that Nuri said and I immediately called for her resignation. It had to be done because things were said that were so horrendous. So many racist comments against every possible group. And the fact that people out there will think this represents conversations the council has. And I'm here to assure you, this is not the council. This is those three people.
We're standing together in solidarity with the people of Los Angeles because we know that there are two obstacles remaining to this city moving forward, to even infringing on our ability to govern. And that is, we need the resignations of Gil Sadio and Kevin DeLeón.